We bring our hearts, lads, to our Father. Father, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you how you provide for us, how you care for us, how you watched over us, how you sent many small angels to protect us and keep us in all our worlds.
He said, "Father, in the Lord's name I declare thy name to thee, and thy people to be with me." Thank you, Father. Great God, Almighty God, awesome God, and ever-maxing Father. Now, Father, we come before thee just to say, "Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy people come; thy will be done, in earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but to deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever." Father, we come to decree and declare that over the city of Glen Arden, Father, that you would continue to lead the township, Father, in the direction that it should go with wisdom, counsel, and understanding. That you would bless all of our citizens, Father, whatever they stand in the need of, we pray that you would meet every need. And we decree and declare that peace be still over the city of Glen Arden. In Christ Jesus' mighty name, I plead the blood of Jesus over the city of Glen Arden. Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Deputy Pastor, we give the low praise.
Certainly. Councilwoman Fareed.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Gion.
Here.
Councilman Herring.
Here.
Councilmember Hairston. Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
And Vice President Ferguson.
Yeah.
Uh, President Curtis is on travel. You have a call.
I put in a motion to adopt for your agenda.
So, yeah.
So. Thank you. I'm like. Okay. Vote to accept the agenda.
Councilwoman Fareed.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Gion.
Yes.
Councilman Herring.
Yes.
Councilman Hairston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones.
Yes.
And Vice President Ferguson.
Yes.
Vote Kerry.
Thank you. And tonight we have two officers on the agenda for the first reading. Deputies, folks, if you're waiting.
Certainly. The first ordinance is zero, ordinance zero-two, twenty-twenty-three. The sponsor is Councilman, Councilmember Herring. The co-sponsor is Councilwoman Fareed. This is the first reading, October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two. In ordinance to adopt procedures for residential parking permit guidelines. Whereas in nineteen ninety-five, a residential parking permit program, RPP program, was enacted by the City Council by ordinance ten-dash-ninety-four and ordinance nine-dash-ninety-five, copies of which are attached. And whereas the primary purpose of the RPP program was to provide relief for residents who were having parking problems from non-residents. And whereas ordinance zero-nine-dash-ninety-five was enacted by no procedure or guideline were implemented to show qualification requirements. And whereas the city needs to have in place procedures and guidelines to apply for parking permit in the designated areas. And now, therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session on the twenty-first day of November, twenty-twenty-two, as follows. One, that the attached procedures and residential parking permit guidelines be accepted, be it further resolved and ordained by the City of Glen Arden, that this ordinance is and shall become effective twenty-one days after its adoption or upon passage by the council over the mayor's veto, whichever is later. Ordinance zero-three, twenty-twenty-three. Sponsor, James Herring, Councilman. First reading, October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two. In ordinance to amend subsection one forty-nine dash twenty-two dot one, commercial vehicle parking restriction. Whereas the City of Glen Arden is a municipal corporation of the state of Maryland and operating under Article eleven dash E and Constitution of Maryland, subsection five dash two-oh-two of the, of the anoint- annotated code of the city of, of the Code of Maryland as amended. And whereas Article seven, subsection one forty-nine dash fourteen provides entitled parking regulations providing for restriction on parking commercial vehicles upon residential property. And whereas the City of Glen Arden Code, Chapter one forty-nine, Vehicle and Traffic is intended to give provisions that are in addition and supplementary to the provisions of Maryland Vehicle Law, Title eleven through twenty-seven of the Transportation Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, as amended, and in accordance with the authority specifically granted by such law. And whereas, under general provisions of Chapter one forty-nine, subsection, section one forty-nine dash four, violations and penalties, the Glen Arden Code states, violation of any provision of this chapter or any supplement thereto shall be deemed a municipal infraction and shall be punishable by provided, as provided in subsection one dash twenty B of this code. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session on this twenty-first day of November, twenty-twenty-two, that, number one, the Article three, Chapter one forty-nine dash twenty-two, point one, commercial vehicle parking restrictions, be and is hereby amended to read as follows. Subsection one forty-nine dash twenty-two dot one, commercial equipment parking restrictions. A, no person shall park any commercial equipment or other, other tractor, track, other tractor, trailer, or tractor-trailer combination upon any public or residential property, except for the purpose of making local deliveries to said property. B, no person shall park any commercial equipment or other tractor, trailer, or tractor-trailer combination having a gross weight in excess of one and a half tons upon any commercial property unless the vehicle is registered in the same name of the owner, of the property owner, and is used in the identified business of the property owner. C, a violation of any provision of said article shall be cited as a municipal infraction, subject to a fine of two hundred dollars payable to the municipality by the person charged in the citation within twenty calendar days of the summons. Be it, therefore, resolved and ordained by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, that this ordinance is and shall become effective twenty-one days following approval by the mayor or passage by the council over the mayor's veto.
Thank you. Now, moving on to the fourth, I'll do the report. Okay.
Good evening, Council Vice President, to the City Council, to the members of the body of the population president. Uh, this is the mayor's report. The report itself has evolved over the course of the last year. Uh, we are looking at resolutions that have gone forth for the Ethics Commission. Uh, we have also looked at the City Council following up with actions that are necessary for our traffic calming measures, uh, which we are still at this point awaiting a resolution or a resolve as far as the formal decision from the presentation that was presented from St. Saskatchewan's uh, over six months ago. Uh, we have several lobbyists, legislative sessions in Annapolis, which currently we do not have a representation, uh, to support the City of Glen Arden uh, in that, as far as keeping a pace with what's happening in the legislative body. So this mayor report has evolved and covered down. Interviews have been conducted for the project manager for the American Rescue Plan funds. Uh, we are in desperate need of a resolution relative to the project manager. In this case, I will say that there have been two very critical calls for American Rescue Plan funding. Um, and if we cannot move without a project manager, then it is now turning into a plea of desperation that we get this taken care of. Uh, we conduct a swearing ceremony for two new officers who attend the police department. Uh, this particular office, mayor has supported fourteen different office calls. Uh, we even went to Justo Bangor Woods Elementary School, Delta Back to School Block Party, where two hundred families were able to get supportive resources as well as food. Uh, we also conducted life skills training for the youth and, uh, as well as games and giveaways. Uh, we were able to attend the honorable Angela Alsobrook Mayor Appreciation Luncheon, uh, which was held in Prince George's Ballroom. I was very good launching, uh, and county executive also acknowledged the work that the mayors are doing every day. Uh, we also had our city manager in that space as well. Mentoring sessions are ongoing with the June House, the Bridge Center, and Port Prince George's as we are addressing the disenfranchisement in our youth, but also our returning citizens to ensure that our return of citizens will have an ability to integrate into society in the most profitable way as well as comfortable way. Uh, meeting with foundational board members for Black History Month, hopeful museum that we will be able to do something in the city of Glen Arden. Uh, the Black History Month, uh, Black History Museum and Cultural Center of Virginia actually did meet with me and the Historical Society, and we were able to discuss and capture Glen Arden's history and, um, over the course of that discussion, found that there is at least three areas that we could, uh, build some historical relevance uh, with utilizing Smithsonian as well as the, um, Museum of Cultural Center of Virginia's support for forging freedom, justice, and equality and bringing forward some interactive, um, multi-history Commonwealth information that pertains to the City of Glen Arden's legacy. Uh, we were able to meet with, um, the teachers festivals, uh, back-to-school VIP reception at the University of Potomac, Washington, DC, where we did celebrate the returning of educators. And also with the teachers festivals, recognize, uh, the teacher of the year, which actually was a wonderful, uh, couple with fashion extravaganza. Uh, we attended, uh, the school board, district board, community advisory meeting, and advised our district board rep, uh, Shayler Stafford Adams on some of the different changes that are necessary within our community relative to not only the back-to-school, uh, process that didn't happen, which was before an active care. Uh, many of our schools are taking it out of high for, uh, building and programs for helping elementary schools, middle schools, uh, students stay actively engaged in school. We're also looking at the roofing system, I know, in Justo Bangor Woods, which is roughly approaching its timeframe of needing to be replaced. So we have talked them about financial preparedness and stewardship over that. Uh, we did attend the general monthly meeting for the NAACP, Prince George's County, uh, and where forth we looked at Annapolis Legislation Communication, voter registration, and attendance strategy. Uh, Prince George's County Community College actually invited the office out to Student Success and Engagement Research Fair. Uh, we attended that, uh, community college representation. I was able to meet with the president, vice president of the community college, and talk to them about some community inputs as well as, uh, become part of the community engagement circle for Prince George's Community College, uh, in this coming year. Uh, we actually did sit on their voter advancement and education session as we drive towards November eighth gubernatorial election in the state of Maryland. Was elected for, uh, that panel, and it was entitled, "Your Vote, Your Voice," at Prince George's Community College. Uh, and the goal was essentially to develop civic engagement and to develop the awareness on how the political electoral process affects marginalized communities within Prince George's County. And we also addressed what we can do in this coming election to contribute and support uh, the county, state, and federal level engagements with plus enough voters. The ma- mayoral proclamation activities, um, proclamations went out to Maryland Park and Planning as well as the Glen Arden Community Center for their continued support and elevation of the Glen Arden community as a whole. Uh, we did less talk school with Shayla Adams, Stafford Adams, as well as our third quarter community event newsletter went out to all of the citizens. We've gotten some very good report from that. I do want to acknowledge, um, when they wore it for her work in structuring that newsletter, I thought it was well done. As well, we supported the American Red Cross in hosting blood drive here at Glen Arden Community Center. Uh, and we will continue to host those blood drives, which is supporting nearly two hundred at this point, based on the amount of people that have come, uh, with much-needed blood as well as fighting sickle, uh, media in our communities. The legislative parties that are out in Annapolis deal with, uh, the M and L priority, Maryland Municipality Priority, uh, where the members are essentially looking at the lead adopting the twenty-twenty-three legislative sessions, which is expanding municipal revenue sources as well as focusing on communication. Key piece for the administration as we project, um, our incumbent, um, either our elections for governor as well as educational aid support for the general funds, uh, trying to grow those by at least five hundred million in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. And this is attributed to statutory formulas and growing funds for student transportation costs. Key piece here is, uh, the busing system has not improved. And so therefore leveraging Annapolis to consider working with the school board on what can be done financially to enable the busing system to be better. Uh, we have special needs buses that are arriving one hour to an hour and a half late for school, which already places, uh, special needs students in a huge disadvantage. So, uh, educational aid support is very much so necessary. As far as the personnel are concerned, we have a ongoing high vacancy rate as well as in the City of Glen Arden changeover rate within our administration. Uh, we are looking at, um, the general as well as the targeted compensation enhancements uh, to address this concern as well as, uh, looking at bonuses. And we're looking at, um, um, life insurance policies, particularly for our, uh, police department. The nine-day report for the Maryland Legislative Budget Priorities is inside of this report. Um, you'll see the various supplemental budgets that have been placed out for our communities as well as expanded community services and the various senate and house bills that impact our community. Um, key bill, Senate Bill four oh five creates a non-refundable credit against the state income taxes for residents who are at least sixty-five. And they will have the ability to, uh, essentially, um, this will equal to a thousand dollars for individuals, if only one of these individuals is filed a joint return in seventeen fifty, one thousand seven hundred and fifty for Mary. So this is a key legislation, uh, that is currently at the House as well as the Senate, creating a non-refundable credit against the state income taxes for residents at least sixty-five years of age. And Senate Bill three sixteen is an exemption from state sales and use tax, uh, which is actually going to go against the following items: diapers, baby bottles, baby bottle nipples, and infant car seats. So this is a fund revenue decrease of about ten million at this, so we have twenty twenty fifty and, uh, eleven million essentially by twenty-four to twenty-seven. We do have some Medicaid bills that are out in Annapolis. Um, they will be addressed coming year, uh, January first, twenty twenty-three, uh, dealing with dental services, including diagnosis and preventive restorative care. Uh, and then we also have Medicare and other healthcare services for non-citizen pregnant women uh, who will be eligible for Medicaid, Medicaid, but, uh, but for their, uh, immigration status and their children, uh, at least up to the age of one. Uh, so that is a key piece for, um, our non-citizens pregnant women. Uh, we will look at, uh, House Bill seven-three-four, which looks at changing the eligibility of guaranteed access grants. Um, these guaranteed access grants are under the delegate Howard P. Rollins Educational Excellence Awards Program. And this authorizes private, um, career schools to award scholarships. So this is a key piece as we look at legislative attempts over this past year to provide not only changes in, uh, student loan repayment programs, but also to add additional, uh, monies into historical black colleges and universities to the tune of about five hundred and seventy-seven million dollars. That concludes the mayor report. Pending any questions.
Thank you, Mayor Paul.
A question. Mayor, in section one, A, subsection four, about the project manager, it says, "Over to City Council's permission." So are we, are you saying that there has been a project manager that's been recommended to us that we, uh, wait for?
So at this point, project manager interviews have taken place. Um, we will turn that question over to the city manager because at that point then the city manager needs to make a resolution, uh, proposal to the council.
No, because over here, that is when I heard you say it, it implies that it's going to, uh, it's basically for us to, to, to pay and, uh, prepare for it. One other thing, uh, if you go to section B, third page, letter B, when you spoke about the third quote on the community letter, go down. I do agree that I feel that you somebody wanted a great job. One thing that I wanted to, just a suggestion, uh, nothing wrong with that, I mean, nothing, okay, nothing wrong with that, just a suggestion. Where, if possible, since the seat that was taking a long time to find folks to build the youth advisory committee where the epicenter is a little different, maybe you could put a call out in the news there for people who want to volunteer to serve on the committee. I think that would, um, I think that would be an opportunity.
Sure. Thank you so much for that, uh, Councilwoman Gion. And we actually have on the website as well, a call out for nominations. We kept a persistent call. Um, I will say that, I mean, we bring nominations to the council, uh, particularly for the various committees. Uh, we do constantly need to have a discussion on how the committees are being filled. As of right now, we make a recommendation, interviews may or may not happen, which is causing really a backlog in us trying to get citizens who want to volunteer. Haven't seen certain citizens who have volunteered essentially being told that their volunteerism isn't accepted particularly. So, uh, I think that that's causing us a lot of trouble as far as getting citizens who want to volunteer their time because they feel like their time is not being respected, uh, particularly volunteering. And, and for these committees, um, these are Glen Arden citizens. And, uh, if any of our Glen Arden citizens come forward, absent of, you know, some horrific crime or otherwise, you know, really, you need to really consider how we're allowing our citizens on committees because that's right now, that's in a huge locker, uh, in getting them through.
No question.
Yeah.
Um. You have to, you don't have to, council members. Of these communities. That's all about these every year. Just because you volunteer, then you have rights to tell them. I do want to ask a question of which report you talked about all the resolutions and everything. Saying, um, for your resolutions for appointments for ethics commission, you divided commission, uh, for a number of resolutions, but which of resolution for the rental housing program?
So the rental housing program was requested of the council prior to your drafting of the, um, the proposal that you submitted in June. So that resolution, and I'll be happy to share that email back to council, uh, that it has been made a request for. And not only that, but the, the council has been leveraged on many, many occasions for consideration. Um, at this point, uh, based on the need of our community, uh, I am seeing that this is something that you possibly could have used that current resolution for. But, uh, the council at this point, I am waiting for us to come to a resolution on what we're going to do with, uh, the American Rescue Plan money and getting our citizens' those monies and those funds. Now, if the council needs me to draft a resolution specifically stating that, we can applaud.
Well, I'm asking that question, but you said that needed right now, that, uh, critical need right now. And, you know, I'm not critical of you for a while, so I'm asking, if we can bring resolutions for ethics committees, the lobby committee, or the other committees, that focus on, why was there not going to be one for the, you don't have to wait for the council to bring a resolution for, uh, for any program. You can bring a resolution and be considered, and be voted back. But if there's a critical need, then why aren't you moving forward on that? Uh, and bringing it to this council as something that needs to be looked at immediately. I mean, being known about his need since, well. About his need. Um, so I'm not understanding why, why you're planning to, it's like the council is holding up this, uh, piece of application. You have every right to bring any position that you want to bring, get sponsored by a council member. And you haven't done so yet. Uh, but yet you brought appointments to ethics commission. About the commission. Twenty twice the missions. For us to bring something that. They need, uh, the, the, the other resolutions that we need. Who asked for this, right now, or? That critical need to be addressed.
I thank you for that, Councilman Herring. And this critical need has been bought to the council as well as our city manager on many occasions. The issue that we have is, is there hasn't been anyone who accepted the call to sponsor it. So drafting a legislation without a sponsor is really abso- but I could definitely draft the legislation, but it doesn't have a sponsor. Are you telling me that you would be interested in sponsoring this legislation? I'll be drafting it tomorrow.
Mayor, if you wanted to, what you do is you bring the legislation, you know this. And then a council member would say, "I'll sponsor." You know, and, 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 and just say for this council member, I'll sponsor, I'm not going to sponsor anything until I need it. You know, so if it ain't in front of me, I'm not sponsoring anything until I need it. See that it's in, 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 it's in a format that I feel that is something that all of us have. I just want to. So I'm just asking a question, you know, if you're not answering me. Why you didn't bring it? You could have at any time, and that excuse about it not being sponsored by a council member. You've never, never, ever, ever said, "We're going to sponsor it." You bought all of that, all these resolutions for appointments. And not once did you ask a council member, "Who's on sponsor?" When it comes to the floor, usually the council president will be like, "I'll sponsor," or a council member will say, "I'm sponsoring." So if there's a critical need out there, then I think that, that it must not be too critical in your eyes. I'm feeling, if you haven't brought that legislation to us yet to address. Now, we are looking at legislation to do the same thing, um, and, but it's a two-phase process. You know, so I'm, I'm just- You know, so I'm, I'm just saying that if the need is out there, we need it back critical. You as the mayor, with over six thousand residents. Ensure that they're safe, they're safe, that 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 quantity of life is kept up to the standard that's gonna allow them to enjoy themselves in the city. You could have put that application at any time, if you felt the need back critical, I'm just asking that question. And you're not gonna answer it because there's no excuse why you should. Because you could have it anytime, when you found this need. Things going out in the community about, I don't care about all these excuses about not helping. You know, you know, I, I, I helped a whole lot of people. But I help them if I follow the chart, and that's another station, this one helps the entire community, not just one of the people that I know. But entire community.
If I may. Thank you. So on October the seventh, I sent a request, not only to the council, but the city manager as well, requesting an emergency consensus. On whether or not we would have an ability to help. Situation, uh, that consensus request was not responded to. I sent out, well, I did send out a potential concern because I said, well, maybe we can utilize the legislation that's already been in place. Which I was told was not going to be utilized, but I have yet to receive an answer to my October seventh request. For an emergency consensus on whether or not this would be a case that's to be supported. Uh, and I only talk about in this one instance because there's only been two calls in such a manner. Uh, one was because of construction was not able to be finished, and this one is because we all know the case. But the issue is, there was never a consensus, we've met twice, and it hasn't been talked about until tonight. And we are literally within the week now of a potential uh, trouble for this particular set of residents. So I have all the emails here from October seventh to October thirteenth, a persistent, consistent for emergency consensus. Which will allow me the opportunity to know that there is a backing from this council to move forward with writing legislation. And because I did not get a consensus, then I saw additional support otherwise. Uh, from the county residential program as well as the county council to see what they could do. And even at the state level, because this has not moved since October seventh.
We can just off the charity, throw a lot of money. He has to have criteria in place because when another citizen comes to us and asks us for the same exact thing. Why didn't you do it for that person? You didn't do it for me, we can sit there and say, well, we, we follow this criteria right here, so that we don't show favoritism. So you just can't swing by and say, I need money for something. You know, and this situation did not just start. That you're talking about, this is a, this has been going on for a while, and you could have brought that legislation for uh, uh, rental housing assistance. Uh, resolution at any time. And so I don't think it's fair for you to sit there and try to make it look like the council just sat on their hands, you're talking October. October, this, we're in October, if this was such an emergency, we had a need, we've been in session since September. You know, and you could have at any time, want that application to the floor. And and had it up for discussion, a public hearing, and you could, you could have. And I'm just saying, you're not gonna sit here, I'm not gonna sit here, Milan, you make, make it, make it look like, um, I'm sitting on my hands and watching somebody suffer, that's not what we do. We follow the charter, we follow the, we follow the, uh, the rules that we set down. And I'm, I'm sorry, if you don't want to follow those, that's just the, that's the name of the game. The wheels of government move very slow, you know, and you know this, you're getting here hard enough to know, but if it's a critical need, then that should be addressed back into June, July, August, September. When we came back in session, we, we had a lot of, we, we, we've come into session while we were in a form reset on a number of emergency situations. So I, this is no different, so I'm just saying, you know, you're not gonna sit there and put out there in the community that. I, or any of my colleagues that sit here don't care about a, a, a situation that has arisen. That you obviously is a little too critical because you didn't bring a, a piece of that station and a charter allows you bring that station every time you want to sponsor us. So, you know, I don't think that's fair to us, as councilman, we out here trying to do everything you possibly can to improve this community.
I can appreciate that, Councilman Harren, but again, your last statement is as long as it's sponsored by someone. This legislation, this request has been funneled through your ARPA manager, which the council has put in the hands of our city manager. City manager has known about this from day one. Now, this ARPA money has specific requirement as far as who can and cannot touch it. Um, I believe that everyone has been informed, uh, there hasn't been any movement and because I was told. We were waiting for an ARPA manager to be a program project manager to be appointed before we do anything with the funds. I have worked on guidelines, legislative guidelines to support this particular case. While that has not been bought to you, I can see, I don't know, I think we need to ask city manager why that hasn't been bought to you. Because I actually did help write guidelines to enable us to move forward. Without a consensus on whether or not this council is gonna take a step forward, without even having the ARPA guidelines pushed on this case. The mayor is in a very bad position to help this citizen utilizing this current council. That's why we went to the county and the county is able to help her, unfortunately, after the critical states. After it has been served, and this has not been something that hasn't been spoken, and the guidelines have been written.
Mayor, let me, let me, let me continue on, I, I, I need to go down this line of questioning, because again, again, you're talking about the power. We gave you, we gave you the opportunity to give us guidelines on other stuff with the ARPA funds so that you can know what we want to do. The council, I, I, I'm gonna tell you personally, I was like, I have enough, I ain't waiting no more, I submitted my own efforts. For H O A, you know, along with Council Harrison and every other council member on this council, submitted money, submitted that station to do something with the ARPA fund. Council, uh, Marie, uh, Stormwater Man, you know, Council Dion and and others, uh, intergenerations, you know. Councilman Jones, I think she's one of them, but he's, he's, that's it, all of us that submitted that station, we use the ARPA fund, the only one that has not submitted that station for ARPA fund issue. Is administration, you're the only one that has not submitted any, any, any type of uh, 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 that station to use those ARPA funds. You know, so don't sit there and say, we're not using, and if you were to what's happening, and I told you just when I first mentioned. If it's something that's going to benefit the community, I would support you one hundred percent. But what I'm not gonna do is sit there and have you, you know, of sitting out and be by and watching four million dollars go down the drain, no way, I'm gonna spend it. And I started spending, and y'all started spending. So again, you know. I mean, with the sound, with the sound, it sounds real nice. It sounds real pretty, but it isn't true.
Yes.
It isn't true.
Yes, yes, it is, sir, and 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 Councilman Harren, let me just clear this up, because you say the only person that's committed is you. Just because the council writes legislation, let's not make it look like the administration has not made the proposals or recommendations. I have those emails as well, so we have made proposals for stormwater management. It is in my monthly reports every time, it is in the newsletter, what our targets are. Whether or not you put at the request of the mayor, it doesn't matter, as a city, you have seen these things. Now, you have made our city manager the head, head honcho for the ARPA fund. There was a request made to go out to see how the citizens want, because it was critical that the citizens spoke on these ARPA monies. I have yet even myself to see the result of this survey that went out. So we have, what we have here is a city council, which took the executive authorities and put it in the hands of the city manager that hasn't executed. And so now you want to say the mayor didn't do it, the mayor can do it. But I'm gonna say, we need to pull it back into the CEO so that it can be done. Right now, you have it in the C E A, the chief executive administrator, and it's not getting done. And that's the problem, right now, we are waiting for things to happen in this administration. If the council, you would get all kinds of legislation, but I can't do it if you continue to place those requirements in the hands of our city manager.
Madam Mayor, um, that's exactly when I'm gonna face the requirements about in the hands of our city manager, making a hundred thousand dollars a year. Who's professional in running the city government, that's exactly what we're supposed to face, that's exactly what her job is, why I should do. I'm not gonna face it in your hands your part time, why would I face it in your hands, and why would I even face it in administration? We as council members have a, a huge responsibility to. We are not gonna sit out and buy and do four million dollars because y'all, you wanna sit there and go back and forth and act. To this day, I have not seen not one piece of that station. Didn't with ARPA funds, I don't even remember any email, and I'm telling you honestly, when I need to report, it seems like you're doing everything outside of that, outside of that. You know, so I'm just saying this, you know, you're not gonna sit there and point the finger at us. When you yourself as national administrator, spend that money to benefit citizens and communities. So, thank you.
Mayor, um, you have been the mayor for over a year now. Over a year now, and I've noticed that you have sent emails, but your emails do not constitute. A resolution. You have to um, do a resolution. Of course, for that, I mean, the email, it's an email, we cannot, if both of our components email, um, we cannot do that. You could have proposed the, um, the resolution. And, and it says on the end, uh, request of the minister. And I'm saying, good question. You know, hoping on it, fine, there's no excuse why, and this, um, particular incident came up in June. You could have done something better, or even if you could help this particular person by then, um, at that time. In between that time, up until now, a resolution could have been, been, um, done, we used the ARPA, we applied, um, council. H O A, the FIBA, uh, seven, three, four, more, uh, you know, just a lot of different, um. Resolutions, we, we, um, we put them in place, wrote them, and we voted on them. The money has not been spent yet because we. In the mail, they still are saying that this best could have a project manager. You know, we don't have, um, have not been spending on project manager, and so we cannot do anything. And definitely cannot, this, uh, uh, we need to say, yes, we want to give ten thousand dollars, five thousand, anything for someone just by the email. You got, I mean, this is not how money, this is the government, you have, you know, we just need to give money back. Sorry, but you could have, and you've been long enough to know that you did, they hold the revolution, they're saying, and. You also have the supervisor of, of the town city manager. I'm going to have, we will not. I mean, even, you go back and listen to it. Say, you put something in the email, I could have, uh, dispersed thousands of dollars. And what would the auditor say? Do you get thousand dollars on an email? You're suggesting, yes, you did say need, but then you should have came up and said, hey, I'm here the resolution. And so, you know, to, to create as a. You know. Something to, to satisfy that, so. It's more real, it's not. I respect the fact that you do that. In public, always putting on us, thinking that move. And that just mean that it's not on my, I'm not going to.
So let's just be clear, I didn't ask you to dispense the money, I asked for a consensus. On whether or not this would meet the criteria of us utilizing these funds, and we said no. So then there's no resolution.
No, you, you need to, you need to create a resolution to cover what you want to be done. And cover up a criteria, and if you did give a criteria to the city manager, you can come back. But what I'm saying is that if this one, this one does not, this one does not fit it, why they customize it to what you want. That's all I'm saying, but do not say that it is, it is the city manager, I mean, the city, um, council that ignored your email. I mean, we, we've waited that before, I mean, concerning a petition, you gave an email about a petition, and then you want to come with a petition, no. We the charter, you try to put the requirement, and want to go out and fill these things if you want to decide, no, it's not to sit on what you want. But you have to go, um, we, you know, the charter is our law. And we have to rely on the law. And I just believe that the fact that you always put it back in our lap, and you have not done what you did, you did not follow protocol. And if you are, if you feel like your, the city manager, um, has not fulfilled what she should have done, then you as the supervisor should have sat down with her. Don't put it on us, because we can't move it, but we get the evidence.
As far as the ARPA fund is concerned, uh, I, in defense of, of, of this, uh, city manager. She broke a criteria for the intergenerational funds, that was not for residential, uh, fund. But she did come up with a criteria for the intergenerational funds, which does not constitute what it is that you're trying to do. So, and with that, from the very beginning, we got the ARPA funds, and council requested to find an ARPA fund manager. We've been looking for a manager ever since we got those funds, waiting for the administration to present us with these, with, uh, persons. That could manage these funds and ensure that they're managed properly and ensure that in ten years, when the federal government, this was part of it, all M and L two. In ten years, when the federal government goes back and says, oh, I'm gonna do an order of my money, oh, you spent it on this? No, we want our money back. So we need to have somebody in place that is focused on the ARPA funds as project managers and how those monies are going to be sent. Thank you.
Um, thank you for that, Councilwoman Jones, I, I was going to, um, you know, get this in the address, well, actually, just to. Extremely helpful in helping craft legislation for you to ARPA fund and helping us to make plans for execution. I do want to thank you, Ms. Farmer, she was extremely helpful to me for the stormwater management program, and that is something that is up and running and applications are being committed. So there is execution taking place on those ARPA funds, but what we are doing is making sure that there's an action program. It would be inappropriate, in my opinion, to legislate over email. We talk so much in this city about transparency and sending an email about something and expecting us to take that proper in the email. I think it's inappropriate, we can always bring topics of discussions with you, I've not discussed, um, the topic of rental assistance program at all. And it's not to call any specific resident out in their particular situation, but there are a number of citizens who may be in that situation. And them not even having the opportunity to know that the city would be, um, able to even provide a program like that. Unfair to all the other citizens who are going through it, and it really becomes a game of who you know is how you get help, and that's not what the city of Glennard is about, that's not what I'm about. As a city council member, I'm here to serve all of the citizens equally and make sure that their representation is, is sold out. Effectively, and so if we want to hold for, I mean, that's what the only thing is, we're saying there needs to be a. Make sure that there's, um, legislation laid out with clear criteria, where any resident in city of Glennard can that act. And, um, determine whether or not they qualify to, to apply to that as well.
I just want to also go on record and say that this is something. This is something that has been a topic of conversation in some way, shape, or form, as far as mental. Offline, Councilwoman Jones, myself, and others, we talk about this American hardship, but what we were also very clear about. To what Councilwoman Jones stated was the fact that we cannot be operating as if the clear expectations of what we want for the ARPA funds are not met, which is to have a project manager in place. And I believe before we went into recess, we, I, I remember saying that, where I said, I'm tired of us pushing, putting forth legislation. For it to sit there in declaration because we await for a project manager to come and administer these funds. And so right now, we are at a standstill where we have to move, I believe, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Harren who stated that. But I do strongly reject the fact that things are being placed on the council as if we're the ones that are holding the city. ARPA efforts behind, and that's not the case.
I do want to make a point of clarification, we are not asking for legislation in emails. What we are asking though, is if I send an email, that it becomes part of the agenda. What has not happened is this rental fund has not hit the agenda, not once. Tonight is the most we've ever talked about. And it's not even a member of the agenda tonight. That's the problem. So for me to bring legislation to the city council, bring the topic to the city council for a point of clarity. And it's still not meet the agenda, we have asked many times for this to be on the agenda, it's not on the agenda. Now, there is a level of, I think, communication we need to get from the city manager on this, as to why we haven't gotten offer fund manager. I know I sent in on an interview, I can't understand why we don't have somebody on it. That was over a month ago.
You asked for, that to be on the topic of the session, but I never, I never said you have.
On October the seventh through the eleventh, I asked for an emergency consensus. When I said I asked for a consensus, that's me asking, could we please put this on an agenda today?
It's not important, no, that was not the word.
Pardon me, Councilwoman Jones, we've seen newer topics of discussion come through and, and raise, and I don't ever recall receiving an email. To, um, provide a consensus to agree that a topic can be put on the agenda. I mean, I just think that this is, it's just a, it's just a misrepresentation of what's actually happening. And if we want to address this formally, as a topic of the session, or as a piece of legislation to be addressed, I think that should just be the next step. Because this is. This finger pointing is not giving us any closer to a resolution, and the fact of the matter is, there are people in the city of Glen Arden who are in need. The fact of the matter is, there are offer funds that we were awarded to be able to help those citizens and, and we need to match that need with our desire and bring it together to provide legislation. So the citizens can get the relief they want, this finger pointing is, is really, it's really not fair, and I really feel bad for the city manager, I'm sorry, and apologize. You are just being dragged under the bus in this conversation.
And I understand, um, two things, one, uh, for the record, and moving forward, you, um, mayor, you want something to be a topic of the session, then you need to verbalize that. A consensus is what it is, a vote is what it is, a topic of the session would be known to be put on the agenda. And be a topic of the session. Um, you, you see in the email that you asked for consensus? That question I have anything to do with, I'll be on the phone.
How do I get a consensus if it's not in a?
You, you can send an email and say, um, uh, President, uh, Corrie, and you know, council, I have, I want to. Final agreement, or whatever, whatever it is, I want to add that this is a topic of the session, the next meeting, if you put it on the agenda. Don't lose that consensus, come, you have to be certain what you, you want. And if you wanted to be a topic of the session, then you have to say that. A consensus is not saying, um. You know, do you wanna be a topic of the session? We cannot hold a meeting, um, via email, because it would be illegal, because there are no, uh, qualifications for the.
And I didn't ask for a meeting.
And that's not paying for the email.
I did ask for a consensus, which the expectation of consensus would be where we are today. Now, what I would ask is, it's not on the agenda. So we can't even, really, we shouldn't even be having this long as a conversation.
No, because you wanted that, you wanted that in the report.
So in my report, now that we brought it up, is it okay for me to ask at this point? That we have a consensus that we wanna strive towards a rental assistance program? You will have a resolution in your box by the end of the evening?
I'm gonna do what you're supposed to do, you couldn't, you cannot, um, ask the, that's the counter. Get out of that thing. Secondly, you have been informed to do the, do the resolution, this is a resolution, it's not about we, we do want to, we do about it.
So I will do the resolution with no sponsors.
Yeah, it's, it's always, it's always, we just do it. Madam, madam, president, this is the correction. You write your resolution, send it to the council president, he will permit the, the resolution on the agenda for the next work session. This is, that's the proper protocol. If you have a resolution, something that you want to bring to the council, write a resolution, present it to the council president, then it'll come to the next work session. That's how it will start. Just sending an email asking us for a consensus to do something is not the proper protocol. And then, sorry, I just wanted to make a point, say, uh, I know. Somehow came up, but my whole, my whole meaning of the meeting was to address the thing for me. For me, and you, and the council. Supervisor, you go, that, 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 you need to. She's not moving fast enough with the email.
I still wanna ask the question, where is the project manager? Because we did have interviews on the process, where are we?
Sorry, Councilwoman Jones, I just, ma- mayor, are you asking the city council to answer? Or you asking the question of the city manager?
I've asked that question of the city manager now.
And are we saying that we don't see, you don't know what's going on?
I'm saying that the city manager took interviews for the offer. And from that particular position, where are we with it? So if you're saying that you're waiting on a offer manager, then I know that we actually took interviews. But the problem is, when we take an interview with the administration, then the city council wants to take an interview. Which means, did you take an interview with the offer managers that was put forward? So I don't know when you have had your interviews, I never know when you interviewed an interview that we've interviewed. And I think that that double taxing is part of the problem. So the administration takes an interview, we pick the selection, then we have to send our top three to the council for you to take another interview. To actually do the appointment, or to give that person a job. I think that that's extra work, so if the administration has taken an interview and found that person qualified. We send that information to the council of the select, and it should be a yes or no on that select. So I know that there has been at least two interviews, and what I'm asking, has the council interviewed anybody that was submitted? Or has anybody submitted any selections? So that's my answer, thank you so much.
But this should have been brought up a long time ago.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm, mayor, I'm supervisor of the city manager, I'm just wanna make sure of remaining here. You're, you're asking the city manager now in this meeting, what the status is of the people that she interviewed? Or are you not speaking to the city manager on a regular basis? Because I'm not, why would you come to this meeting and bring up that the city manager has not? Or making it seem as though she hasn't done something, if you're her supervisor, you should be speaking with her regularly. If the question is to the council of whether or not we plan to review project managers, that is exactly, precisely what Councilwoman Jones has been asking. Where are the presentation of these project managers, this last interview, to be appointed, as you said, laid out in the process? I think it is, I, I, I think, I couldn't do it, um, if it was my fault, um, to, to sit there and allow you to. Make Ms. Barbara seem like she's not doing her job. If you need conversation with Ms. Barbara about that, you don't need to wait for a city manager report, that, we get the report because we are not the directors and supervisors. The city, the citizens get the report because they need to know what's going on, not for you to ask the city manager in these meetings to go and supervise the managers. If she interviewed the, um, project managers, then you should know what's going on with that, were we the most confused as well?
So, thank you for that question. The question that I asked, has the city council had an opportunity to speak to the candidates for offer position? And this answer, in this room right now, is no. Which makes a concern in my head as mayor, because I know we've interviewed people. So then that is on the city manager, because the city manager has to now present that manager. The offer manager works for the city manager, doesn't work for the mayor.
When did, um, when did you get on that? That was last month, okay, then you.
So, I mean, I do wanna give, so you actually did sit on any?
We sat on the interview, and so here's the problem, when we sat on the interview, then the council had their private interviews. We never know when the council has their private interviews, we will leave their.
Hold up, shit, I'm, I'm just gonna get some verification on this process, so you sat in on the interview, you talking to people. And in no time, you instructed, uh, Ms. Barbara to move it forward to the council.
Absolutely did, we, we had a vote, and we said yes.
We had a vote.
We, we had a, we had a meeting, and she was instructed to send out candidates forward. And if you're telling me that that candidate has not been sent forward, see, all this time, I have been thinking that the council has been sitting on this candidate. That was last month we took the interview, if you're telling me you haven't gotten anything, then yeah, I am concerned.
Okay, well, hold up, now, now, so, you didn't tell us in your report last month that you had interviewed the candidates and you were trying to move on forward? So you didn't even notify us this past, so we can inquire with Ms. Barbara about these, these candidates? And my thing is, where are they at, what, when, where are they at, have they been fingerprinted, have they been background investigated, and all that type of stuff? If, if that, if not actually even been done, why do you wanna move forward?
Because the city council has to interview, you have asked to interview every candidate, even for committees that we bring forward. So if you haven't interviewed that person, you don't give me a notification when you're doing interviews. This is kind of the break, and where we need to, the communication break. So I do need to understand, if you're telling me as a council, that you have not received the September recommendation for the offer fund manager. Then that's a problem. And we need to follow up with that, that is not the stewardship, that person works for the city manager, doesn't work for the mayor.
Okay, well, let me get some verification, I mean, HR director's back there, so can I get some verification out? Yeah.
So, with regards to the offer fund manager, the, we did the interview. It has been difficult to get in touch with the person, we made an offer, a tentative offer to them, but they have not gotten back in touch with us until recently. That we are having them come in tomorrow to do the fingerprints and the drug. So that's where that stands, that's why you haven't had anything, and that's why the mayor hasn't got anything, because we didn't hear from them until just recently, that. The, that the application was sent in, he said he submitted his initial, the initial city manager, that gave him the grant, he had called the reference. Before we could bring it in to do the drug test and fingerprint, so that's where that is frightening.
So, okay, so I see what you want, it's, it's not communication between the county, it's communication between the city manager and the mayor. So I'm not understanding, mayor, this is such a high priority, why wouldn't you give the conversation to your city manager, about what she does with this? Because obviously, your party's identifying this opportunity. You know, so, I mean, so it is moving forward, she don't, she needs to do it, the city manager, put them through the process. But you didn't feel the need to inquire with her, where we were in the process, that's what seems to me.
I have some questions. Is the council not gonna interview this offer manager? Because now the games have changed, the roles have changed. Before, we could even submit a committee member, the council wanted to interview that committee member, so just. Before we could even submit anybody for HR, or get them into that process, you wanted to make sure they were qualified. Now you're telling me that we don't have a council interview, that you are getting to not interview this person. So the council is choosing when and when not to interview people, this is weird, that's where we're having problems. So, in my head, once we interviewed, I've been waiting for the council to say, you interviewed, and then we moving forward. Now we're moving forward, the council has not interviewed this person.
And city manager said she, that is my, this person, I don't know. So we background checked, our, all of the things that were. She went to the council.
So we're gonna, we're gonna bring him to the council, the council hasn't interviewed this offer manager, which is in control of, what, five point one million dollars? We don't know if the council approves of this person's criteria. You, this is weird, you took an interview for someone who wanted to interview for the youth advisory, for the ethics commission, for the smaller commissions in the city. Even wanted to interview the people that wanted to be on the housing committee, for the Glen Arden Housing Authority. But the offer funds manager, the city council has not taken an interview for.
Mayor, she just said that she was on the, it was on the back, my thing is this, I'm glad she's on the fingerprint and everything else, because why would you bring somebody here to get something? Why would you want somebody to charge five point million, not five point four million dollars, four point five million dollars, you don't know what the background is? Of course, she should be doing all of that for, for presenting to the council. Who would, why would, you'd even do that without getting the background, you know, we don't even hold on them until they go see their fingerprint stuff. Because they're dealing with you. So, it is not unusual for us to do things like that, it's not unusual for us to say, get the fingerprint checked out, because it's, because it's a tradition that we're gonna do. So, you see, but basically what it is, it seems that you're making excuses for why you did not follow through as a mayor with your city manager, about the way you were with the situation of a project manager. So I mean, I'm actually really done with it, because I know where we are with it now, um, and I do appreciate the city manager for doing your due diligence to make sure that the candidate is qualified and can get through the process. The first thing this council's gonna ask, was fingerprint done? The first thing they're gonna ask, fingerprint done? And if it wasn't, we'd be like, bye. Definitely you fall. You know, so that's what it is, so I, I mean, I'm really, I mean, I don't have to discuss it anymore, I'm not, I'm not, I do have another question for mayor. Okay, now, mayor, I'm, I'm, I'm. Trying to get a new, a new different counsel. You know, but I'm really upset with this letter I got in the. I'm also upset with this open letter from you to the citizens of Glen Arden, talking a bunch of stuff about what we're doing. And that we're violating the laws, and we're violating the ethics, and we're trying to overturn the factions, and we're trying to overturn the government. Now, I'm gonna tell you, with N W A C P, with the respective group, for them to put some mess out like this, can not come to not one council member to say, what is going on? Not do any research, I have no respect. Because how can a black organization like that, on top of, just eviscerate this whole council on this information, and it is all packed up? And none of this is true. None of this is true. And the only thing that could have got it comes to you. You know, I don't think it's right, you know, I tried to work with you, but I, you started my name out here like this. That ain't, that ain't gonna fly. You know, this is, I mean, I mean, everything in here is not, is, is, you know, we're not overturning any of that, so actually, we're not trying to, uh, 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 put you out of office. We're not trying to do any of that, we're trying to reach out to the citizens to find out what we find, what, what, what we think will make more respect. Which we have a right to do, now, instead of, Ron said, we can do whatever we wanna do as a council, when it comes to that challenge. And we can, we can, we can do it like today, fifty days later, it's in the past. You know, but to put this out on our way, and, and then have this person, who really should be removed as the president of the, uh, N W A C P. You know, obviously, she doesn't do her due diligence, when it comes down to situations, now, N W A C P, biggest thing with them is they do their research. They make sure that what they're doing is, 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 that, that what they're talking about is either violation of our civil rights, and they're gonna follow through with it, and they get their train on it, and you just, you just go ahead. This is not, and this is true, and this person, to me, it's just been one person, and coming out here and putting this out here in public, dump on their letter here, and who knows where it's. You know, who knows where it's. You know, D B C C, the Merlin A C L U, the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, Al Sharpe's National Action Network, Central County Council, Dudley Nick Charles, P G P. So again, let me tell you something about me as a contestant, don't, that mean nothing to me. I, that, that, mayor won out, mean nothing, I'm gonna vote the way I need to vote. They can come out here, and they can sit in this audience, and they can pick it up, and it's very frustrating. I don't care. You know, so all of this, these threats, putting all these people on here, news and all of that, I don't care. Because I'm gonna do what's best for the citizens of the economy, that's what I'm, so when you wanna run with stuff like this, I mean, we can do it. And I know I can do it, and you know what I can do, but I'm trying to be a different person. You know, so, I'm just telling you, this isn't right. This isn't right, this isn't right at all, just, in an open matter, it's even worse.
Thank you, Council President, and, um, Councilwoman Harris, you actually beat each to it, so I, I will say is that. I don't foray easy to intimidation tactics. Never did, never will. And I want to caution you, Madam Mayor. You're shredding a very, very, very dangerous. And I'm telling you that because specifically with what you put out, because Councilwoman Harris, you said you received the letter, I never even received the letter, ever. It was on your social media. And that means you endorse what is stated in this N W A C P letter. And if I don't, if I don't place any light on anything else. And if I don't, if I don't place any light on anything else in this, in this letter, I'll read it out loud, this, I'll read this one section out loud where it said, "In light of recent developments, we are aware that the Glen Arden City Council is seeking to overturn the legal election." I hope you all heard that. Okay? Is seeking to overturn the legal election as well as the responsibility of the mayor and to appoint an administrator to oversee the city's business. That's Trump-like tactic. That's how January sixth took place. And I will play this in. If any harm comes to anyone here or anyone connected to anyone here, you are to blame. No one else but you. You, you are being blamed based on what in your head or what narrative you want to spin that are not factually based. There's never been a meeting, ever been an email thread, any communication, any correspondence that ever, even a topic of discussion that focused on this council overturning an election. I don't even know where that came from. I don't know where that came from. But somehow, you have difficulty communicating with your city manager. But you don't have difficulty communicating outside of the city of Glen Arden with every single person that you can, you can spew a false narrative to. I'm not one to miss my words. I say what I say and I'm done with it. But I am very clear, whether it's being held by, whether it's being heard via YouTube, whether it's being heard via Zoom, whether it's being heard presently in, in, in this, these chambers. If anything, anything happens to anyone here or anyone connected to anyone here because of these lies that you're putting out there, it falls on you. And that's what I want to say.
Thank you. I've been trying to hold my peace on this all day since I, um, was made aware of this letter to N W A C P. I have to say I'm disgusted. Absolutely disgusted. Okay. An organization that has represented our people for so many years and our struggle and our rights in being used in this way to make it seem as though the citizens, uh, make it seem to the citizens of the, the city, to the citizens of the state, that this council is doing anything nefarious. I am the council member that sponsored the legislation on the charter review meeting process. And that was done in an effort to be as transparent as possible with the citizens about what's going on. As Councilman Harry may have mentioned of, the state of Maryland allows the council and the municipalities to make changes to their charters without input in the way that we are going about it. We had one charter review meeting, one charter review meeting, which you were invited to, Mayor Cross, but you were not in attendance at. And so to not even be at attendance in that meeting, not to even have a conversation with anyone about what happened in that meeting, but then to go all over the state, have people sending things on social media, have letters coming from the N W A C P, have all of these important people copy, for what purpose? I'm, I'm unsure. Citizens, the purpose of the public hearing that is happening on this Thursday is for citizens' input on what we should do. As a charter review committee, we look at the charter, we're tasked with looking at the charter holistically. Every ten years, we are going to do that from start to finish. And there's a number of reasons to do that, to make sure that it's still aligned with any federal regulations or state regulations, to make sure that there are no inconsistencies between one section and another section, to make sure that any practice that has been put in place over that ten-year period is properly reflected in the charter. For example, hybrid meeting, that was never a thing ten years ago when the charter was done. So how are we addressing that? When we met as a charter review committee, three council members, we met with attorneys, an attorney that is hired to do that process with us, we realized that as we were about to start looking at the different sections of the charter, mainly the, the mayor roles and responsibilities, the city manager roles and responsibilities, the council roles and responsibilities, that there are in fact conflicts between those sections. There are sections that say the city manager should do something and in another section it says the mayor should do that exact same thing. We cannot operate at the city and be efficient in our operation when we have conflict. Citizens, and you've seen this play out as we sit right here and the conversation is happening about who's doing what. There's a lot of finger pointing, there's not a lot of clarity. And so what we wanted to do was bring that situation to the citizens. And what we did was repurpose our charter review committee, which I should say, it's a committee meeting, but it is fully public, fully transparent. You ask yourself, when has it been a committee meeting in the city in which all citizens were invited? Okay? That meeting is acceptable via Zoom. Anybody is able to participate in that. Not only are we able to participate in it, at the end of every meeting, thirty minutes is allotted for citizens to have comment on what we are doing. There is nothing nefarious happening, there is nothing happening behind closed doors. Again, the purpose of Thursday's meeting is to address the citizens, let them know what's going on and give them an opportunity to present their perspective on things. And let me add, not only do we have that public meeting on Thursday, we have another public meeting that we've designated in November, which is our standing public hearing for citizens to come out again. So citizens, that's not only just the thirty minutes that's allotted to you in the charter review committee meeting, but also an entire session dedicated where we're not going to be talking about or looking and reviewing the charter by hearing from the citizens and then another meeting in November to do that. So for anyone to say that we're trying to do anything even remotely behind closed doors is ridiculous. And the assertion that anybody is trying to overturn the results of an election is just incredulous to me coming from someone who sued the city of Glen Arden, trying to overturn the election result. Okay? Citizens, do not forget that in twenty twenty-one, when we had the election, okay? The mayor was supposed to win by fifty percent plus one. That did not happen because there was six candidates in the city. Okay? Which meant that Mayor Cross now had less than fifty percent. In fact, she had about forty percent, but she sued the city and wanted the judge to overturn the vote of sixty percent of the city. And she knew she had, she needed fifty percent. Sixty percent of the city. Citizens, you understand what that means? She wanted a judge to declare that she was the winner of that election. So please, miss me with the non-transparency, miss me with the, I'm trying to overturn an election. Miss me with the, I'm not being honest, because the one thing I am is not a liar. The one thing I am is a fact teller. The one thing I am is a truth speaker and I will always stand up for that. So citizens, do not be fooled. Come to the meeting on Thursday, we welcome you to come to that meeting. There is nothing going on that we cannot share with you. There is no question that can't be asked of me. And I will say this again, I hadn't received an email, I hadn't received a phone call from a single citizen about this. I in fact reached out to Mayor Cross when I heard rumblings around this to say, let me understand what is going on? What is, what is the misunderstanding? Because we haven't done anything. And I reached out to you in an effort to let's move forward in the city, because we're not trying to do anything wrong. So I find it just disgusting. And even beyond that, you, you played hand games with my daughter on Saturday and you're, you're out here putting this stuff around the city, making her mother look horrible, making, making this council look like we don't stand for anything, making us look like we're just totally against the citizens. And that is just patently false. I reject it. I don't want any part of it. And any citizen who has any questions about anything, feel free to reach out to me. You see me in the street, talk to me. You got my email? It's not a problem. I have no, nothing to hide. And that is that. Thank you.
I have something. Thank you so much, um, Council President, Vice President. So let's set the record straight. The reason why we had an election seventy-nine days late is because the sitting president, vice president, then of the council, you see even on this panel, did not hold the election in accordance to the charter, which said thirty days after the general election, which would have been June the second, we should have had that special election. But the then sitting charter didn't matter, because even the lawyer said, you are intentionally and willfully violating your own charter. And the sitting vice president said, so what if we do? So in that regard, the city council did willfully violate the city charter. So if you're going to violate the city charter, then let's just let the charter stand the way it should be at the state of Maryland, where the majority is the majority, not this rule that we have fifty percent plus one and then we neglect to put money in the budget. Despite citizens crying out, despite the attorney of the city calling out, despite the board of election begging, despite the candidate begging, there was still no money put for seventy-nine days. And it was the attorney's position that we were violating the charter. So Mayor Cross didn't sue to win, Mayor Cross sued to break our citizens up to ask the question, why is it seventy-nine days later, we still haven't had our election? Who is the mayor? Because if it were up to this council, then we could have been out for infinity. Because the charter of the city of Glen Arden is arbitrary. I do want to respond to. Point of order, matter of president. That's what we do. Whenever the mayor is speaking, it's a point of order.
You've spoken long enough and told enough tales. I was the president of the council during that time. And because there was no money in the budget to hold an election, I cannot force the, the council to, uh, come up with the money. And the money came into the budget, then the election was held. You called me and asked me to overturn, to go ahead and make you the mayor, because fifty, that, that, what was in the charter, you did not want to abide to. And as council president, with integrity and with doing what I'm called to do, I was not going to appoint you mayor because you called and asked for it.
I did not call you.
Yes, she did. Yes, she did.
I had ideas, I was putting money in the budget. How does County Woman Fareed say we knew that there were six candidates, five candidates, and we were going to have a special election? And in the same meeting, right now, you say, oh, we didn't have enough money.
You, you said at the end of your speech that there was no money appointed in the budget yet. The budget had not been approved.
You could have called for a meeting to put money in that budget. You knew that we had.
You don't know the process of government.
Let's not get there. What I want to holler at is that the council resolution.
Point of order.
I, I still need to, you guys, the council resolution.
Okay. Well, because you have, oh, you are absolute liar.
No.
You are lying. I never said what is, what is, no. The point of the matter is, you did call me. You called both of us, crying, speaking in tongues, praying, criticizing, doing everything else. You could not understand, because you said that we had the authority. And why could we use our power? You wanted, uh, the, the, the charter specifically said. That specifically said to fund the, uh, if you, if you have to have a runoff, you have to have the, um, the runoff in the same manner in which you did. Once we had that forty thousand dollar, um, um, election, we didn't have the one, no more money in the, in the budget. So we had to put forty thousand dollars in it again. And, and, and a minute of budget, it requires five, um, votes. I want to say, yes, we had, we kept saying, no, we did three meetings. Even the attorney, even the judge, when you had your, uh, virtual, um, uh, court case, he even, uh, acknowledged that we, we tried three times before we came to, to, um, you know, to, to pass it. But we cannot, we cannot just put no forty thousand dollars in a budget. Because you want to be, um, the mayor. And you are a liar from the pit of hell. Because I, you are. You called me crying, speaking in tongues and saying all that stuff. And, 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 and I had a bit of sandwich and went to the bathroom, came back and everything, you still running your mouth. And you will sit there and say, what is, what is? I never said that. What I said was that I, you or no one else, on a, forced me to, um, to violate the charter. You're not going to let me, cause me to do anything that is in no particular order morally, spiritually, ethically, or legally incorrect. Then you will sit there and say, I, what is, what is? I don't know what you were dreaming, but you would not do to tell a lie on me. You will not tell a lie.
President, let's move forward.
And, and the bottom line is, what it is, you, you sued, um, Glen Arden. The judge actually even said, you, you want to get that for a violation of charter, because we didn't have the, um, the, uh, the, uh, election. And then he said, you want me to violate the charter? You have forty percent. And you, and you want me to say that you's the mayor? You want, it was two issues. And that's why you didn't get nothing.
I didn't ask for anything.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did.
I didn't ask for anything.
You asked, you asked, right? You're not concerned with me. Um, you.
I did not.
Yes, you.
I didn't ask for any, I didn't ask for any.
I mean, that's how we do it. It's public knowledge.
And then, May tenth, twenty twenty-one.
Point of order.
May tenth, twenty twenty-one.
Mayor President.
Please go and review the council meeting.
Oh, thanks, sir.
Point of order. Okay, we're moving forward to, um, city manager. That's going to be, um, keeping the N O P part, um, in order to put the fifty equipment in at the N O P part, to move fire on the three trees um, in the grove in the area close to the, that apartment lot off of, um, per. And in order to do that, I got three quotes. The quotes are all hundred and six thousand dollars. So the charter doesn't allow me to report with that, but I have to be more than eight minutes. So, um, at this point, I am going to three here, charge fifteen, and then that's two thousand dollars to remove those trees. And then we will be, um, we will be cleaning the fitness equipment. And then we have the playground at N O P and the next two, two, three. You'll have a question for that. Um, the fitness, um, at the N O P, we have to build some of that. Um, so it's, um, several different pieces of equipment. Some of it is stationary and some of it will be packed and brought in. Um, so, introduction, class of citizens, um, we had a class of military handsman on the seat to look at the church on Hamlet Street. And, uh, runoff that occurs from White Seat Road onto Hamlet. Um, because there is not a viable concrete, uh, gutter and curb. And so I did allow to have the current contractor, he's doing sidewalk construction, to give me a price on that. This was not in the budget, so this was prior to the budget. Not based in the budget. To this large amount, the amount that was purely by land construction, put in, um, two hundred and eighty-one feet of that. To remove the two hundred and eighty, eighty feet of asphalt curb that's currently there. And then it's like, to replace it with curb and gutter, in the area up to the six foot wide asphalt gutter pan. Refill, um, uh, curb with top floor feet, straw foot, grass foot, that is, uh, seven thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. Um, the work could be done, um, not, not before they do the city, they're almost done doing the sidewalk. But, um, this project is the third day. We'll also decide to move forward with that. Um, but that is again, that's a, uh, uh, I'm sorry, you said this is a, kind of a church on Hamlet Street? Yes. It's from, from White Seat Road, from the curb at White Seat Road, where there is currently concrete gutter and curb. And so we get about, um, I'd say twenty feet into Hamlet Street. It's an asphalt curb. It's not like, um, a true concrete gutter and, um, curb. And it goes all the way down to the driveway. And Mr. Hamlet, as I did take a look at it, was right. Is that the runoff that go into their, um, driveway? And all this inundation in the driveway, then also goes beyond the church. You go down the street and it goes down beyond the church. And sediment sort of, um, comes out down there beyond the church. So this would take there the whole, um, down there from White Seat, down Hamlet Street to where the other, um, driveway. Uh, Mr. Hamlet, did you saw under this, um, order, Asian?
It should have fallen under the, under the grant money that we're looking at, the testing runoff. And so it should have fallen under that. Hope of the assessments. Therefore, assessments.
Okay, so, considering this is already been remediated by having that instruction there, or?
They will do the remediation by fixing. They will do the remediation by fixing.
I had a request from a resident at thirty-three twenty-two Page Street. Who likes to get a handicap space in front of their residence. They are a people with permanent disabled path. And is a fifty-plus year resident in Narnar Mories. Been concerned that part of the overcounting and parking on the street. They are able to park in front of their home with their disabled path. And their caregiver is not able to park near the home as well. So they were asking whether or not there could be a handicap space put in front of the residence. I did check the charter and there is a provision that you all have allowed handicap spaces. So I'm going to give that to you all. The last thing that I have. Home sit tax credit. The treasurer, you see, location from the state of Maryland that the city has to decide how much it wants to offer a home sit tax credit to the residents. Every year, every county municipal in Maryland, prior to limit the tax. Ten percent last each year. So that means that for a resident who has a increase of over ten percent, they can receive a credit based on what you all set your credit at. Currently at five percent. And you can go up to ten percent each year. And so we just need to let the state know whether or not you want to pay the five percent of current cash or your home sit credit. And that's what I'm doing that by the end of the month. And as far as the city manager's report goes, I already talked a little bit about the. Person coming. We have onboarded our. Public Works Director, Mr. Charles Simpson, who is here in the audio. Starting public works. And. It's been a welcome addition to the executive. Also wanted to let you all know that the cable TV operator. Condition is open and to access. You all will be receiving both access. From the staff could not appreciably differentiate between the two candidates. They were equally well versed in the production of videos and programs. And so you all will be continuing to moderate and then remember meeting to have someone start with that. And I wanted to thank Ms. Monet for the work that she did on the newsletter. She did an outstanding job on the newsletter and things to do with outstanding job in social media for the state and being up in a timely manner. And just want to say that it's been my pleasure to work with the staff here. Excellent staff to work for. It's been a great opportunity for me to learn and grow in my career. This will be the last meeting tonight. And I wish you all the best. So the question, thanks to residents of the city. We will be doing a walkthrough on many things that the contractor. So if it's what's on the list and what's not taken care of, then we'll address that with the contractor. Okay, so we'll have to. To address that in terms of change order. If that's something that pretty much that happened due to.
The city manager Barbara, I do want to say publicly to you that it was my pleasure working with you into generation poverty. Weekends where we actually took time now just to work on that. And also when councilwoman Fareed and I know that you've been there. In the board room, it was a pleasure to, I know you were under staff and you still. You're city manager, passing temporary going to the base and. Existence, you stepped up and really appreciate you doing that. So I'm going to. I have a quick question. I don't know. It's a combination for you and probably not. Similar to what I mentioned to the mayor about the newsletter, about putting some of the committee, the reprints from local committee seat. Is it, would it be okay if we put like? The city of Glendale is hiring.
We have that in there.
We do have to consider, we get that I could prepare.
We can solve this.
Yeah, that's what I meant. Well, that's what I meant. Thank you.
Yes, and Barbara, I do want to thank you also for your. Work on N O T for the time. Based to.
I just want to thank you for all the work that you've done. That it could be the. A lot of people wouldn't have the benefit. So I thank you so much for your work in that. The newsletter, I loved it. It was really nice. I think it would be great if they were gonna let the first to be able to come down to write another. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm not ready to talk to the doctor.
Okay, so I do. Thank you. I'm sorry, treasurer. But with the city manager, I do thank you again for your service to the city of Glendale. I do want to acknowledge that city council, based on council resolution zero-one-twenty-two, which was changed to put the hiring and firing of the administration under the city manager. With our new rules going forward, it should be noted that council resolution zero-three-twenty-twenty-one, which has been replaced now, amend that personnel section nine oh one of the charter.
Point of order. I'm president of the board.
Well, in her report, there are positions that are now needing to be hired. And it was put under the city manager as the sole discretion to hire and fire. So if we don't have our city manager, are we then transitioning that role to the chief of police, Regis Bryant, for the hiring?
Yeah.
Okay. So we just want to make sure that we acknowledge that that's what has changed.
Thank you.
We had a presentation on actually the recommendation of appointment and recommendation of removal of city council. Not the ability to hire.
Madam President. Really getting bit tired here. The council did not change anything. The city manager has been hiring and firing since nineteen ninety-five. This council is the last house of Phoenix council that has been in place since nineteen ninety-five. You know, you keep on saying that, that's not accurate at all. Read the charter. Read the charter from nineteen ninety-five. Read the charter from nineteen ninety-nine. This became a high-grade government back then. And they brought in the city manager to handle all those functions. The city manager had to recommend. Terminations. You can't even terminate fifty apartment years. That was put in the charter. You can do that. That was already in the charter. So no, the highest fine has been with the city manager since they changed.
Councilman Harren, you had a resolution that came in November the ninth of twenty twenty. Council Resolution zero-three-twenty-one, which made the mayor the authority over the administration. That the director at head to report to the mayor. That is what we changed. And that began where city manager transitioned to what you acknowledged on last Monday, going to the city manager, city council charter, which is not what the citizens recognize. They did elect the mayor, they did elect the city council. City manager has always been in support.
It's already clarified.
Let me just clarify, ma'am. You did it fundamentally. I did not introduce that at the station. Mr. Williams introduced that at the station and I voted no.
If it is.
That's what gets you in trouble.
No, I knew it was Councilman Williams. I'm saying I recognize you. The city council passed that resolution, I believe it was signed by Councilwoman Jones and Ferguson, Eason and Williams, which was then the supermajority. And then Councilwoman Jones and Ferguson and our council peer did that resolution, not even a year later. So that's where we're saying the amendments are now challenging the vote of the people.
And as a municipality, we have the right to do that.
Let me just clarify the fact, okay? So December two thousand and fourteen, section five oh three, the powers and duties of the city manager allowed the city manager, as Councilman Harren already stated, to recommend appointment and removal of personnel. At that same date, section nine oh one, the authority to employ personnel was authorizing the city to hire personnel and city manager to recommend appointment and removal of personnel in the council. So those two sections were consistent with one another. In November of twenty twenty, section nine oh one alone was changed to give the mayor authority. This is an example where there were inconsistencies now with the charter because section five oh three still existed giving the city manager that authority. So at the time of the election, there were actually, the city manager and the mayor had the authority to recommend the hiring and the firing of personnel. In March of this year, section nine oh one was reinstated to its previous language so that there was no longer a conflict. So to be clear, citizens, when you voted, what was in place at the time was actually a conflict. And yet the city manager and the mayor both had the responsibility of doing that. What we did this year was reversing. Why? Because the city manager is a full-time employee. She oversees all of the departments. Could you imagine if you were at work and you had to report to two different people? One person being someone who was only part-time and who was not abreast of all the day-to-day affairs? No, that would make sense. And so that is why we made that reversal. And this is a prime example of why we are reviewing the charter from start to finish to make sure that any of these types of inconsistencies are reconciled. And to the extent it makes sense, some solicit feedback on that, we want that from the citizens to understand where we should make the changes. In some places, it's making up one change in a section. Or if it were as the mayor wanted to be, where everything is under the mayor, that will require us basically changing the whole entire charter. So what we need to do is review the spirit of what the charter was about, which is what Councilman Harren is saying, what was it before? What are the changes that have happened? And what do we need to do in order to make sure that our government continues to run effectively and efficiently? Because having local people with the same responsibility is a surefire way to have a net.
And let me just clarify that the mayor was over the directors, not the entire administration. That's why the city manager was over the rest of the administration, like the lower level. But the directors were to report to the mayor. That was section nine oh one that changed. So in that, it, one of the strengths, the weaknesses right now is you don't know as citizens who to talk to. Do I call the city manager? Do I call the mayor? And the truth is, there have been several complaints because there hasn't been clarity or even phone calls returned. So being a part-time mayor doesn't mean that I'm not responsive. I'm absolutely responsive. That's why the citizens persistently call. And I am happy to say that we have been able to get things done regardless. So this is something that we want to acknowledge that the citizens are clear. And this isn't our charter. Our charter was very clear. And it has become a mess over the last seventeen years. So we should possibly go back even further.
So just to add from Saturday night, but we have. So like Councilwoman Fareed stated, twenty fourteen was a date when those two amendments were discussed, city manager being the one that the administration reports to. You have it out there that this current council is doing this, is doing that. When again, if you look at the history of how this charter was written, you'll see that what you're saying isn't untrue. You're sticking to nine oh one. When nine oh one, I don't know, I can't state it in as full detail as Councilwoman Fareed stated. But when you listen to and read what nine oh one state, you can see that it was a direct conflict with five oh three. And citizens, if you're listening, this is the other issue. Citizens need to have a charter so they can see for themselves that it's not the council saying this, the mayor saying that. If you see it, you'll see what the facts are. What's happening is you go out there, Madam Mayor, and you put these out there like this council is doing this, this council is doing that. But it's not true. We all know the administration and council, while we can't go into detail about personality, we all know how much confusion having those two laws caused. Where some people like I answer to the city manager, no, I answer to me, no, you answer to me, no, you answer. It was ridiculous. And we, as a new council, we saw how there's two things here that contradict each other. But what you're doing is you're going out there saying that we're changing the entire charter. When if you look at the original intent of the charter, nine oh one never stated anything about a mayor at all. So if you really want people to really go back to how the charter was intended to be, that the mayor wouldn't really do anything but really be a figurehead. Ceremonial it is. So please be careful when you put these things out there. And I would encourage you, while you're putting these things out there, whether it's through pop and circumstance or whatever, have your facts with you. Have documentation to show people that this is not something that is right. What you're doing is you're going and putting a plea out there and people gravitate towards you thinking like, well, she must be telling the truth without researching the facts. The facts are there. Stop saying that we changed the charter from how it was originally intended. Because if it was, if we were to put it back to the way it really, really was originally intended, it would be ceremonial it is.
I just want to correct this for the record because we have to do real-time fact-checking. Section five oh three for the city manager is not just for the city manager to appoint lower-level responsibilities. It says, he or she shall recommend to the council appointment and removal of department and agency heads and all subordinate officers and employees of the offices, departments and agencies of the city government on the basis of merit and supervise all other city employees. Section nine oh one had virtually the same language for the mayor. It said, the mayor, on the recommendation of the city manager and with the approval of the council, shall appoint the heads of all offices, departments and agencies of the city government as established by this charter or by ordinance. All office, department and agency heads shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor. All subordinate offices and employees of the offices, departments and agencies of the city government shall be appointed and removed by the mayor in accordance with existing rules and regulations as well as in the merit system. So it was exactly the same language in one section as the city manager did it and another section as the mayor did it. So it wasn't, there was no hierarchy to what the mayor did and then what the city manager did. It was exactly the same.
This is just. Shelves where. What? I attached, you find a patch of. To the city of. And extension of all.
The property tax is falling this season. In August, the city received five hundred and one thousand six eighty-eight. This five hundred and one six eighty-eight was a result of a four uh five hundred and four thousand five hundred and one that was received for current year tax. But there was a refund of two thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars streaming back down to five hundred and one thousand. Compared to the previous year, during August, we received five hundred and twenty-six thousand and thirty-seven, almost the same. Looking at subsequent years, the month of September twenty twenty-two, this is a collective one hundred and twenty-eight thousand one. General fund revenue, general fund revenue was seven hundred and thirty-two thousand five seventy-three. Of this amount, total overall tax was six hundred and twenty thousand. License and permit was thirty-four thousand eight forty-one. State grant was eighteen thousand seven forty-seven and other sources of the first nine thousand three fifty-one. The whole received for the whole was two thousand seven hundred and six thousand compared to the city that lies here with two thousand six. By looking at the city's operations, the general fund had a budget of five million, it's directly toward seventy-three. Today, this is just collected seven hundred and thirteen thousand. This amount is around thirteen percent of our annual amount. So we are almost within that range because at this time we should be seeing approximately ten percent. General fund expenses, but it was five million five hundred and ninety-nine thousand. It's ten, seven, five thousand. Special revenue, the revenue for special revenue was four million four hundred and forty-six thousand bucks. Two million one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. This is due to the American West Bank Fund, that is all. But please note that we will bring them out to two hundred and forty-two thousand. Will come from reserves because I received that from the fund last year. Expenses are just thousands because um we would have been able to make it in months. General project, fund, the revenue budgeted one million seven hundred and one thousand. So far, we have uh received thirty-five thousand. Expenses, budgeted one million seven hundred and forty-four thousand. So far, we have spent one hundred and ten thousand. The whole, the whole group of revenues were budgeted to be one hundred and fifty-five thousand so far, nine thousand eight hundred and nineteen thousand. Their expenses were eight thousand one hundred and sixty. Four hundred and forty-four thousand. It's one hundred and fifty-five. Cash balance, they did the city, cash balance remains sufficient to pay all expenses that the bank must do. Cash balance at the bank, as a December twenty twenty-two were as well. Operating account at ten million nine hundred and seventy-one thousand and twenty-five. Over there, it's about two hundred and seventy-one. Global account at one hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred and nine. Lot grand, high four thousand one hundred and two. And the big thing that has three hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred and two fifty-nine. Regarding the MLG Open State Grant, that grant has one hundred and forty-seven thousand in total. Have spent seventy-four thousand nine ninety-five on the program that's going on there right now. They're left with seventy-two thousand and nineteen-three. Starting to recover from the crisis of special events. For special events, I will report the National Night Health in August too. Um they actually spent five thousand two hundred and fifty-four. Back to school back on August twenty-seven, March February one thousand six. And for the Glenon Day Celebration Bridge Product in downtown September seventeen through the end of August, eighteen thousand three. For the next report, I will take these events again so that you could see where what's the in and how it's going to probably pick up.
Yes, that's one. Um you just do it. The home state tax credit, but how will, how will that affect the city property taxes for the city depending on?
Okay, so what do I have here? Don't let the whole set credit. As long as they've been low to ten percent with regard to assessment upon their saving. If the assessment brings your property more than ten percent to you, then you will receive a credit. That credit will come from the state, don't necessarily affect our people. Section of the bill that relates to the state alone, okay, the low.
So right now we're at five percent. Ten percent will give them a bigger credit on their property tax? You take the higher number? Right now we're at five percent.
Right now we're at five percent. If they are at ten percent, but if you go home, if you allow it to be like eleven percent, then the state, then the the state will have to already get that credit.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, money is that the um Fendros company wanted us to weigh and uh the, how would that affect? That causes the yeah, I know that these accounts we have to discuss together. And I know that, I mean, what was your thought on it when they asked for us to weigh the um, it was like two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
I I was.
Did they send you a formal uh?
No, they're helping, but I was in the discussion, I was a little uncomfortable with that because I have not checked any of that information from their board meeting to the terms because of their doing that. I hope you see, with regard to what part of the debt from there, to look at the question, you see that I have nothing there. You cannot get another information and remember, in the new, we tried calling them, not getting that. I tried calling them, not getting that, not moving anything with regard to their current revenue budget. But there was so much, so I was a little.
I think I have, I have to see Patrick Stewart's information. I think he's still a person of interest on that. Is it Patrick Bayton or is it Patrick Stewart? So maybe I can get his information. Maybe try to reach down to him. And maybe keep that off this sometimes question concerning the the five percent or the ten percent. So right now we're forgetting five percent as a homeowner in the home state tax credit. So they're giving us an opportunity to say, uh, we can take it up to ten percent and then we'll we'll benefit as homeowners will benefit from that uh instead of getting, I know we get a a portion of our taxes reduced because of this home state tax credit. But if they raise it up to ten percent, then that means we'll get even more, more of a deduction.
So I didn't think with you, in order to have a discussion with, uh, the city map, uh, about I might understand that we um have sent credits more than, or if we have sent how much they can increase the assessment over ten percent, then the citizens will get back a credit. But if it is below, you know, I would say let me know that with humor in detail. I mean, I'm not assuming that what the citizens want. How we can go about so benefits this is not.
And my final question, I'm not sure if it um but it uh it'll take part of that next year. I thought they were gonna do, you say that we're talking about it, that part of the string.
There's part of it, um.
There's not enough brand money for any part of the project. It's like the light, we're part of the project. There's not enough money because of the escalation of the property equipment um to do the kind of projects that we all have presented to V and R. Yeah.
I know because the 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 open stage drives, um, I I'd be concerned with the so even after we have
On the um, we talked about the resolution back in June. Our resolution goes to the Department of Labor to approve the application of the new client support. Vitalization program within the Department of Housing. Do we actually get that to an appropriate word?
So I'm just looking up this um tax credit is home state tax credit. Um just want to make sure that, I mean, maybe an example works. So the example that's clear is that if your old assessment was a hundred thousand, right? Then you have a new base in your assessment uh for the first year, which is about a hundred and twenty thousand. Then an increase of ten percent will result in an assessment of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So it's just the difference between the increase, which was the hundred and twenty to the hundred thousand, which is a hundred and ten thousand, which is ten thousand. So that tax credit would apply the tax due on ten thousand uh versus, you know, the extra increase. Um so it is not limited based on the market value of the property. It does not limit that and it's determined by the Department of Assessments and Taxation. But it's usually calculated on the assessment uh as an increase from the lower cap enacted by the local government. So uh if we look at this from this particular purpose, if we're at ten percent or less, uh we have the purposes of determining that local taxation. So the homeowner will pay profit, no property tax on the market value increase above that limit. So if you take us to ten percent, then we won't pay as far as property owners uh that increase above. So we won't pay for the, in this example, the one hundred and twenty, we would only pay on that ten thousand that increase, so it'll be a hundred and ten. So that saves the property owner like ten thousand dollars in taxes.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all coming out. Real quick before I get started, I would like to acknowledge we have our new EPW director in the house, Charles Tippkins. And once again, thanks to the citizens that took the time out to visit us in person and to our citizens online. For the police report, uh monthly report, uh we don't have anything on certificates. Um I did think about the last time about stolen rims and tires in the Honda Ford um that was happening at Rapid Pays. Um since the last meeting, we haven't had any uh stolen auto um been reported in the honest in Glen Arden. Um we did reach out to the county and other jurisdictions, uh able to give them a description of the vehicle that was being moved and tagged. Um and we also gave information to the D.C. Police Department. Um so we haven't heard anything, so um hopefully they got captured, but we haven't had a crime going on in reference to that. That's the only thing I really have significance. Um I had a meeting with Prince George's County Police Department and I'm pretty sure we are aware that they extended the curfew violation to the end of the year. In Glen Arden thus far, we have zero curfew violators um to report. Um we're still working with them on that initiative. We are grateful, we are happy, we are thrilled now having been violated in the city of Glen Arden. Only other thing on certificates, uh we have on uh, we have the Trumpet Treat event, October twenty-ninth from two-sixth here at Glen Arden, uh for the kids in the community on that we put on every year for Halloween. Um it'll be another event here um that council will be doing in total. So I'll be in the back and the rear and the parking lot uh for the police department. Uh but we need to help the city community, um the kids participate in that. Uh that's all I have. Uh that's all I have.
Okay. First, I would like to open up the door for our citizens.
Uh can you hear me?
Yeah.
My name is Anthony Powell. Natalie Wood, one. Something is obvious, we need to have an assistant treasurer. An assistant city manager position. And an assistant police chief position. How can you figure out? Then you shouldn't have to have these positions, you can't have one person. Doing twenty or thirty different jobs, it doesn't doesn't make any sense. If you go to, like I said, if you go around state level. They probably had those positions, assistant city manager. Assistant assistant treasurer and assistant police chief. And this thing about the uh. The meeting on Thursday, I'm a long term resident of Glen Arden. And I feel mayor Smith or mayor Adams was in in office. I came up there, I said all child changes should be placed on the ballot. That didn't happen then, it probably gonna happen now. So people make suggestions and you sit there. And they act like you were paying attention, but you don't. Basically do what you feel like doing. What was done in the past, it probably done in the present. I'm saying, the citizens put the bill. In the city, in the city. The funding of pocket taxes, the citizens will put the bill beside. What you do, what you don't do, the mayor is not. Not a full E of the city council, she's a full E of the citizens of Glenon. You were a full E of the citizens of Glenon, we decide what you do. You decide what you do, I'll decide what I do at the school system. Because my duty, this is my duty, this is what I was doing. That's that's what we need. Pay for in in the future too. Too many councilmen say we do what we feel like doing. They come across a lot and with me. Make me suggest I don't want to, but we don't do what we feel like doing. There's six thousand citizens in Glenon. How many of those citizens contacting you about changing the the former government that we had? Probably nobody. Right, and my last one about the.
Wrong.
Uh.
Wrong.
I was, we probably have three thousand people, two voters. That was three thousand, how many contacted you? So I'm saying. I'm saying, we need to give back. Yeah, Jones, you performed, you know, these cheaper for me, but you decide what you're doing, good job. Or you're doing bad job, that's what I'm in other cities in my country should have to hear. You know? Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to say something. Okay, I just want to let everybody know we are having a cancer awareness event on October twenty ninth from seven to four. So to have um everyone come out, everybody come out, it's supposed to be, it should be a really good event, you have um a neurosurgeon Regina Hackett and you have um. Another oncologist, Dr. Peter, we have uh. Joanne Frederick, she's a counselor and we have. Mostly men about cancer men and black men. Uh I think. And a nutritionist, Dr. Kobe. So it should be, it should be a good panel, um we also want to have a group that's called uh. Save the pink and we're gonna put on a good performance uh. So I hope everybody come out, it's a matter of information, you know, you know, the focus is on disparity and uh you know, among African American community when it comes to diagnosis, prevention and treatment. So um it should be a good event, so I'll see everybody there. Um seven to four on October twenty ninth. Um it's definitely working with them, and all the council members have chipped in to, you know, give us recommendations for doctors, nutrition, you know, the work of person in council affairs and people. Even calling around. Uh people to come out for informational food, so I mean, it should be, it should be a time and a really informative for everybody. Hope to see you all there.
Thank you.
And citizens. Citizens. And lastly. I need to suggest in the health of citizens, the charter, that's impossible. We had seven on back before from Stan, I'm the person that will look it up. Might say one thing, they might say something else, I'm gonna see it myself.
The charter is available on the city website. And on um third day, we plan to copy the.
I didn't tell them for a while.